Councilmember Dorothy Dow here, Mayor Knox White.
Here you have the minutes of January twenty-second in front of you. There are no changes. All stand approved as submitted. Thank you very much. First up tonight, we have a special recognition. Who's handling this? Dave here to handle this. Who's?
Actually, this will be Ben Carroll from our Public Works Department.
Okay.
Come up and talk about some accolades from our from our team of recent late.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't know if you've guys had the opportunity to see the national news Public Works has made, but it is just, I just want to say I'm proud to work in this city. More importantly, I'm proud to work for the Public Works. The story you're about to hear, if you haven't heard it, it's pretty amazing. It's something that started out very small and we were, somebody contacted us via email on a weekend, on a Sunday afternoon. And Jeff and his crew decided they were going to make somebody's day. And we never really do anything to be thanked. We always encourage our employees, just make City of Greenville what it is. So I'm going to turn it over to Jeff. This is Jeff Hammond. He is our solid waste superintendent and he's going to tell a story because he's told it to about a hundred people in the past three days, national news media outlets. So I just want to turn it over to Jeff. And I think after Jeff tells the story, we're going to play a video and then introduce the team. So thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. So it's been said, Sunday evening, I received an email from our Public Works Business Manager, Jennifer Simpson, and saying a woman had lost her wedding ring in the recycling dumpster at Rutherford Road. So I said, there's nothing I could do Sunday night. So I thought about it. And the moment I called up supervisors, I said, all right, guys, we're going to have to dump it on the ground and look for it. And there was a little pause on the other end. I think they thought I was kidding. So we did. We dumped it on the ground and they were searching for a few hours with no luck. Then I was able to get in touch with Melanie, the owner of the ring, and able to locate which compartment she put it in. So after that, I called Frank Dagnall, one of the supervisors, and told them where I think the ring might be located. So they isolated the search to that area. They started moving some stuff around. Travis was getting a little frustrated. He kicked the box and sure enough, it came rolling out. So he was able to find it and we were able to get it back to Melanie. So all three of the guys are here now. One guy couldn't make it tonight, James Burnside, but we got Frank Dagnall, Manny Cruz, and Travis Golden.
Cool.
I think we're going to watch the video and let you all see it.
Good, good. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Next is a presentation. Who's handling that? Oh, I'm sorry. You're next on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, good evening. I'm Dana McConnell with the Center for Developmental Services. We are a nonprofit located in downtown Greenville on Academy Street between First Pres and St. Mary's Catholic Church. And I'm here today with my senior leadership team. And together, we oversee an incredible partnership that serves over 8,000 children each year who have developmental delays, as well as about 1,000 individuals who have lifelong intellectual disabilities. So CDS, which is what we're commonly called, began as an idea in the early 1990s when community leaders realized there was a need for better, more coordinated care for children with developmental issues. Then we opened our doors in the year 2000, and so we've been here 24 years. But our work in the disability space, it gives us a front row seat to what life is like for our clients and patients. And we appreciate what the City of Greenville is doing to support them. I was proud to nominate the City of Greenville for an annual award given out by the South Carolina Department of Disabilities and Special Needs. It's called the Silver Palmetto Award and is given to only one city each year who has gone above and beyond for the disability community. And there's three reasons why I wanted to nominate you guys. First, the city planners here in Greenville asked for our input at the beginning of your strategic planning process. And that was monumental because we were brought in at the front end, as well as some other disability providers, to ask what's going well and what could be improved. So we were brought in at that front end and not the back end as an afterthought. So great job. Thank you. Second, your Parks and Rec Department created a fully inclusive park called Brooks Playground. And that allows children with all levels of abilities to play together with their siblings and their friends. And so that's just amazing. And thank you. And then third, your marketing department helped to develop a new app called Access GVL. And this helps people with disabilities to navigate our amazing city. And as an added bonus, it adds the opportunity for tourism for the disability community. I'm excited to announce that the City of Greenville won that award. It is my honor to present the silver award to you today.
We did just follow that very seriously. We've come a long way, but we couldn't do it without the partnerships we have in this and other people who help us find our way in this realm. So thank you very much for that and everybody who's been involved. We do appreciate that. Okay, now I'm going to go back to the sign up sheets. Folks who signed up to speak, Will Mecklenburg, where are you? Okay, hi. Here you are, back there.
Cool.
Okay, I'll go down. Back there in the back. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor White. My name is Will Mecklenburg and I'm just here to speak in support of the annexation of the Cherrydale area. I'm a landowner in that, within effective property. And I've always really appreciated what the city has to offer myself and my family. I think it does do a great job, all the ways that I interact with the city, whether it's the Bridge Downtown or Unity Park or all the things that sometimes people speak out against, I'm for. And I hope you're able to, once we're part of the city, deal with some of the homeless issues along the railroad track. There have been fires that have affected right behind the Sphinx Gas Station, of all places, and my neighboring property, which is rented by Techery and Mixtapek. Also Cherrydale, it's a gateway to the city. So I know you guys have a vested interest for the people passing by there on the way to TR. Every day it's grown exponentially and I hope Cherrydale can be a little bit spruced up somehow because it's not quite what it could be. So just a word of support and one more shout out, Austin at the city during this whole process, Austin Rutherford, very communicative, the whole staff, really do a great job. So I have nothing but good things to say. It's just all.
Thanks, Will. Alan Etheridge, you've got a message for us, I believe.
Good evening. Just wanted to, Alan Etheridge with the Metropolitan Arts Council. And each of you should receive, should receive an invitation to our 2023 annual meeting on Monday, March 11th at 5:30 PM in the Gunner Theater of the Peace Center. As most of whom know, Metropolitan Arts Council turned 50 in 2023 and it was our best year ever. We had several milestones that happened in 2023. First, we received our first million dollar gift, thanks to the Graham Foundation. Our gallery was named in memory of Dolly Partey by her husband, Lou Partey, for $250,000. And a new endowment was established for continuing education for emerging artists by Warehouse Services Barry and Joe Cox. Also, for the very first time, our income exceeded $3 million and our total assets totaled $5,082,000. So we're incredibly excited about all of that and looking forward to an incredible 2024. I also want to call your attention to this year's Downtown Live. We have a great partnership with the Special Events Department. And we're going to have the third Thursday of every, of every month, an art market there, which will contain several artists there as opposed just to a couple, which we've normally have. And I want to clear up a misconception that you may have heard. I'm not going to be pole dancing. That's just true. But I do want to say thank you to the City of Greenville for always being so generous, not only to Mac, but to all the arts in Greenville. The arts have an amazing role in the vitality of this incredible community. And thank you for getting that and thank you for realizing it and thank you for supporting it. And I'll see you next quarter.
I'm sure.
And I also want to thank three people with the Special Events Department, Tara Aker, AC Thornley, but I can't remember her married name. Anyway, Nora, and Will Young. Thank you all for what you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. They always deserve thanks. We appreciate it very much. Okay, we have a couple of public hearings. Looking open right now, number nine A.
This is a proposed abandonment of an unimproved portion of Pleasant Ridge Avenue.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a petition for an abandonment of some unimproved right of way in the Pleasant Valley community. This is an extension of, right of way extension of Pleasant Ridge Avenue. And Potomac Investors LLC has requested this abandonment. It's going through our normal internal review, as well as circulating it to utility providers to just see if there's any concern with this. We did not receive any objection from the internal review and neither nor have we received any public comments from our public notifications through the Greenville News and through our mailouts to the, to the neighborhoods. So happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, we, I do appreciate the sign and everything. I did have a few calls from constituents that serve in the area and they were, they didn't pay close attention to the strip. They assumed that it was abandonment and houses. And I said, no, 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 we're trying to build a sidewalk. They said, oh, we need that. So that's probably why we didn't get any more complaints. They needed.
We've been working closely with the petitioner. They were with us on our sidewalk project and have dedicated some easements for us to do that sidewalk project. And we're trying to work with them on this event.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate you talking to them.
Okay. Anybody have comments about this particular item on the agenda? Okay, if not, we proceed to add item number nine B.
Proposed Cherrydale Annexation AX-1 2024.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the public hearing for the proposed Cherrydale 75% method annexation. Provisions of the SE Code 5-3-151 aim to probably annex a defined boundary in its entirety when it receives a petition signed by at least 75% of the property owners owning at least 75% of the assessed value. This code provision also requires city council to hold a 30-day notice public hearing prior to the first reading of the annexation. This public hearing is to be held following the presentation of required materials. Next slide, please. All 30-day notice public hearing requirements have been met. The petition received exceeds the requirements of the state statute as it was signed by 83% of the property owners who own 93% of the assessed value. A copy of the petition was available with the city clerk's office. A published notice was printed in a local newspaper. The notice was posted on the city's bulletin board and a mail notice was sent to all taxpayers of record, the chief administrative officer of the county, public service, and special purpose districts, and all fire departments in the annexed area was conducted. Next slide, please. The full property description for the annexed area is provided in our lobby for review. Next slide, please. This is the annexation boundary. Only 42 parcels to be annexed. The total real property to be annexed is 96.122 acres. Next slide, please. The city services shall be provided to the annexed boundary upon notification of final reading. These services include both police and fire coverage. Next slide, please. This slide provides a breakdown of the taxes and fees to be removed and added for the city services upon notification of final reading. The Parker Fire District and Greater Greenville Sanitation District millage should be moved and replaced by the city's rate. The county's hospitality and accommodations taxes shall be replaced by the city's. In addition, the county's commercial industrial stormwater fee shall be replaced by the city's rate. The city requires a business license fee based on the North American Industry Classification System. Lastly, some properties may currently pay an additional sanitation fee or sewer fee, which they would not in the city unless they are single-family residential for sanitation collection. Next slide, please. The petition requests that the property to be zoned designations of BH Business Heavy District, BG Business General District, and IG Industrial General District in accordance with this map. Next slide, please. Mayor Council, I turn it back over to you to hold the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All righty. And Chief Farley, who's here tonight, wish to speak to us. Thank you. Good to have you with us, Chief.
Good evening, Matt. Good evening, Council. I stand here tonight, my name is Greg Farley, sorry, Parker District Fire Chief. I stand here tonight representing the professionals of Parker District Fire Department. Many are here tonight. Our concern is the major safety impact to the community with the proposed Cherrydale annexation. I'd like you to think about something for a moment. Imagine one of your loved ones. Picture their face. Now visualize your loved ones laying in the Cherrydale parking lot, not breathing, maybe bleeding profusely. Maybe they've been involved in a motor vehicle accident on North Pleasantburg Drive and they are entrapped in their vehicle. Brain damage begins within two to three minutes of oxygen loss. How fast do you want help to reach them? Would you want a fire engine that is a half mile away respond? Or would you want a response from a fire engine that is a mile and a half away? One mile further away? I really hope, I really hope you would say that you wanted the closest fire station to respond. Additionally, did you realize that 60% of all responses for both Parker District and Greenville City Fire Department are medical emergencies? So the situation I just gave you is a strong possibility. Parker District Fire Station number 53 is located at 712 State Park Road, only one half mile away from Cherrydale. Furthermore, Parker District's second station, located at 107 Cedar Lane Road, is closer to the Cherrydale area than any secondary fire, city fire station. So Parker cannot only get the initial apparatus there faster, but we can get the second and third apparatus there faster also. What choice do you think your citizens would make? Is the City of Greenville putting increased revenue over citizen's safety? If the proposed Cherrydale annexation is approved, you are definitely putting money over the safety of our citizens. Parker District Fire Department has proudly served the community for over 80 years. We are rated ISO Class 1, the highest rating that a fire department can obtain, and the same rating as Greenville City Fire Department. We have four personnel assigned to each apparatus, the same as Greenville City Fire Department. Both departments are professional organizations with incredible personnel. The city spokeswoman mentioned a few times in the news that Greenville City meets all national standards regarding response times. That response standard is five minutes and 20 seconds. I have no doubt it can be met by the station on Rutherford Road. My argument is Parker District Fire Station 53 can be on scene minutes faster. In fact, we recently had a structural fire at the old fire wash across the street from Cherrydale. Engine 53's travel time was one minute and seven seconds. Meet the standard or beat the standard? What does the public expect? Annexation and auto aid seem to be getting brought together in conversation. These two subjects are totally separate and not related in any way. Parker District and Greenville City Fire Department continue to respond together as needed with our mutual aid agreements. Again, our agreements have nothing to do with annexation. In closing, our goal would be to sit down with the City of Greenville and to try to come up with an agreement that will benefit both the city and special purpose districts. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Anybody else have comments? Chief, I want to, sorry about that. I want to say we have utmost respect for the Parker Fire District, absolutely. Great heritage and great service delivery, for sure. And as we talked about, we've had agreements with the district, as you know, to accommodate both the interests of the district as well as the city. And I don't know any reason we wouldn't want to sit down and do exactly that again. I think is my own philosophy is that when we have areas of, extended areas beyond the city, that we would expect the special service district to actually provide the service and to be compensated for that. There are certain areas that might be a little closer anywhere, maybe that's more problematical. But I would hope we would have discussions with you to talk about just that because it's not just a matter of this annexation, but all future annexations, as we have in the past worked, I think, very well, as we've kind of grown into that area because we do recognize, again, a lot of growth in that area and Parker District has provided fine service today. There is no question about that. Thank you. Look forward to those, those discussions. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. If you speak too, okay. I wasn't going to hold the chief to three minutes, but I'll hold.
If you will please state your name and your address, please, ma'am.
Sure. It's Sarah Franco, 217 Goodrich Street. I'm a commissioner for Parker District.
Okay.
Safety is our number one concern, as you just heard from our chief. We're also concerned about loss of revenue. And the reason why is because this has a huge impact on safety. Cherrydale is going to cost us about $500,000 per year. And because the city has been annexing a whole lot of Parker lately and been taking our most lucrative parts, we stand to lose about $1 million per year in revenue. We don't yet know what effect this is going to have on Parker District. But our budget is $13.8 million for the 2324 fiscal year. And I'd just like to compare that to the city's operating budget of $126.9 million for the 2324 fiscal year. That's $113.1 million more than Parker District's budget. As it get, again, I don't know how our, how this million dollar shortfall is going to affect safety in Parker District, but it's, it's possible that we may have to look at layoffs. Now, I took a look at your website again today and I saw that public safety is one of your primary goals. This seems like a perfect time for you to prove that. In addition, one of the things that I wanted to point out is we have a supplemental retirement insurance that collects monies from commercial fire insurance policies. So every time you take a commercial piece of property from us, it actually takes money out of our retirees' pockets. We want to work with the city. We want to work with the city for the good of the city and for the good of Parker. Most importantly, for the good of the residents of the city and of Parker. And I think we, we've just talked about why it's good for both the city and for Parker. So I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, as I say, we're happy to enter into renewed agreements with, with Parker to address many of those issues we did in the past and we're glad to do it in the future as well. All right, that concludes the public hearing. We got anybody else? Okay, proceeding now to the consent agenda. Have we got one more? Have we got one more? Okay, sure. You may. I'm sorry.
Please spell your name and your address.
My name is Randy Jones. I live at 107 Marillet Avenue, Greenville. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you for allowing us time. Okay, my name is Randy Jones and I'm the chairman of the commission, Parker District. First and foremost, I want to say that our employees are the most important thing that we have at Parker District. Without the employees, there's nothing. So we value them greatly. We, you know, part of debt services that we were using this million dollars, when we were in the debt, using that money to pay off, we just ordered seven new trucks that we have a yearly payment on. The reason for that is when I retired from the fire department, we were running 3,000, 3,500 cars a year and I thought that was a lot. So now they're running 8,8500 cars a year, trucks still in the road, running a lot of fuel, wearing tail on the trucks. So we're trying to keep up-to-date equipment for the firefighters. I'm just trying to bring your attention how the loss of around the million dollars a year for the recent annexation, not just Cherrydale, but how it's going to affect us and our debt services. We're just asking, I think the mayor has already stated this, just hope that y'all would negotiate in good faith that we could come up to a, an agreement to, with the benefit of the city and benefit Parker. Thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
And I want to underline that a moment too, because this particular annexation is one annexation, significant annexation, but it's still one annexation. There'll be other annexations in the next five years, 10 years, 20 years, who knows? As the area becomes urbanized. So it's, it's important that we have an agreement that allows both sides to see some mutual benefit as we, as we accommodate everyone. And that's the way we did in the past and that's what I hope we do in the future. It's beyond than just this particular episode tonight. Anybody else? You better. Well, we got one fellow in the back too. Okay. Okay, you're welcome.
Mayor and Council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name's Adam K. I live at 34 Smith Avenue in the Dunedin Community. I'm also a member of the commission. I'm kind of echoing off of what Chief Farley has already said. The station on State Park Road naturally will be at Cherrydale in a matter of minutes, maybe two. He's already emphasized how important each minute is. So the time we're there, within two minutes, we've already assessed the situation. If it's bad enough, we've already called for backup. Within two minutes, we're still pulling on the station from Rutherford Road to arrive. Now, suppose we were busy, Rutherford Road doesn't get there for four or five minutes, then assess the fact that it's a situation that needs urgent care. Who do they call? Palamod? Stone Avenue? Maybe another station close by? We're looking at another six to eight, 10 minutes before another truck is on the freeway. In less time than that, Parker can have three units on scene from Cedar Lane Road. It's a thing of timing. It's important who's there, how can we be there, be on the scene, putting out fire, aggressively working when the second units from the city arrive. It's a matter of timing. We're concerned about being there on that portion of town, making sure everybody's taken care of and safe. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay. Yes, sir. You're back. There you go. Oh, yes.
Good evening. My name is Steve Farley, Mayor, City Council. I live at 339 Loop Street.
I'm sorry, could you spell that, sir?
O-O-O-P.
Thank you.
Loop Street. And for a while, we've been hearing about the annexation until we just noticed a sign put up by Cherrydale. I don't know what the intentions are regarding my community, but there's no signs there. There's one on the back end, the Arcadia Drive, where Greenville Bus Station is at, but it's not in the predominantly black neighborhood. So all I want to know is, is that a possibility? And can we, when we get to that point, be very transparent? be very transparent about what our intentions are about annexation? We all live in my neighborhood, are getting higher water bills that we didn't sign off for. It used to be just a park or whatever, but it's something else now. And annexation has not even taken place. Okay, now, the reason I'm saying transparent, and I know it's not this body's job, we do the same thing that you know with Greenville. They built the bus station in my backyard. There is more runoff throughout the neighborhood. I just left it thirty minutes ago. The water is polluting our neighborhood. During the summer, rodents have been running into our neighborhood because they just spread it, the environment. So all I'm saying is that as we go forward, I heard you offer the invitation to the fire people. I want to meet with you and talk with you. We have to have the same consideration.
Right.
Not let us hear. Nobody ever said anything from the community. So I'm putting on record, putting all of them on notice. If you do that, you will be hearing from us because my parents bought this house when my daddy got out of the military. Where are two? All my uncles fought in there too. They bought them homes. The only place they could live. The only place, they were in red land. It's still our property. Mr. Charlie Jones, eighty years old. He lived there from her parents' house. But now Greenville threatens our property, and nobody cares. And then annexation will come in and finish us off. That's all I got to say. That's what, that's my, that's my.
Well, thank, before you leave, I'll clarify for you. No, you, this is not part of the annexation. And if you ever are to be annexed, you would have to tell us you want to be annexed. And we'd be happy to have that conversation with you to talk about the advantages of being annexed. But that'd be a conversation you have to want to have with us. But we'd be happy to, always happy to have a better conversation.
Let me clarify, because as I said, I spoke to county council when they did the Greenville deal. They ran off the record, said, we did you wrong. We know we did you wrong, but we not willing to fix it. Let me run. Now, when we talk to our representative about annexation, this is the quote. Instead, they want you, they can have you.
No, that's not.
I've gotten rid of the fight. That's, that's came directly from my county councilman. I can't call his name, but I won't.
Okay. We won't have that conversation unless you want to have. And I'd love to take a look at loops. All right. Anybody else?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Wayne Moore, seven oh one, Welton Avenue Extension. I am also commissioner at Parker Fire. The gentleman preceding me talks about the phrase, the city wants you, they can have you. My concern is the relationship between the Greenville City, Greenville Water, and the Greenville City. If someone signs up for water, they are automatically signing up to be allow annexation without fighting, without having to say in it if it comes within one mile of them. I don't understand how this is fair. I can't go buy water down the street from another vendor. I have no choice, short of punching a will. Doesn't make sense to me how I can be held captive and then property taken in some shape, form, or fashion by legal, you know, by legal workings. And then it, you know, it's only provided by one source. And by signing my name to say, I want water, oh, and then if I say I don't want annexation, they cut my water off. Says so. Read the paperwork. I did today. Section three point ten point one point one of the agreement. That's, we got problems here. This is just taking more land. Yes, I'm representing Parker. The others have been very eloquent. To me, this is about money and taking property. And it's going to hurt the people of Parker. It's going to hurt the employees of Parker. We're providing wonderful services for them now in the fire, in fire and rescue. I question what the city can do that's any better or any greater, other than pad the pockets of the bank account instead of helping, allowing Parker to continue to do what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Okay, Council, you got the consent agenda, which I don't think we have anything on the consent agenda.
No. Yes, nothing on it.
Regurgent. Okay.
New business, item fifteen A, an ordinance to allocate three million, seven hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred ninety-eight dollars in the capital projects fund to recognize additional resources for the Unity Park, vet lands, and maybe projects, and to return the same amount to the hospitality tax fund on the park project and other miscellaneous adjustments to the park project.
So moved.
Second. What call, Earl?
Councilmember DeWorke, Councilmember Fleming, Councilmember Gibson, Councilmember Rosen, Councilmember Stahl, Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Fifteen B.
An ordinance to annex a property located at nine Stahl Street and provide the zoning designation of RNA.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Any questions? Discussion. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming, Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brayson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Fifteen C.
An ordinance to abandon an unemployed President Ridge Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion second. Clerk Colerole.
Well, we did, um, I asked Clint about, because we have abandements on occasion, a couple of times a year. And in my view, and I think it's shared by many on this, when we abandon something, the city should receive something or benefit city somehow, certainly not cause harm. So to your point, Clint, earlier in the day, we don't know what Potomac is planning for this property that we're abandoning, but we do know they've worked greatly with us on the sidewalk project. It's sort of a, an acknowledgement of that partnership, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure that we should, I mean, we should be, there should be a benefit to it. So we have a benefit already on sidewalk, but we do not know what they are planning for development there.
Correct. Okay. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brayson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Fifteen D.
An ordinance to allocate funds for the section one oh eight guaranteed loan of three million, six hundred fifteen thousand dollars in the community development fund and in the capital project fund for the construction of new sidewalks in special emphasis neighborhoods.
So second. Motion second. Any questions? Okay. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brayson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. If there's any question about what the city of Greenville does, build sidewalks. We build a lot of sidewalks. That's what we do.
Can I ask a question on that, even though we've gotten past it? So what was everything, was it NIB funds or just out of the CIP or what is it?
So it's, it's not NIB funds. It's, it's just part of the CIP as far as our match.
That's the CD. Yeah. Okay, sixteen A, resolution.
A resolution to designate fifteen thousand from the city council's reserve in the state accommodations tax fund for the providing fifteen thousand in financial assistance to the Notice Speed Week event, Greenville Cycling Classic.
So moved.
Second.
We don't need to do it.
Yes, I took a motion and a second.
They was.
Aye.
A resolution to appoint ministerial quarters under chapters, need to municipal of the code of ordinances of the city of Greenville.
So moved. Second.
Second, His Excellency. Yes, sir.
Thank you. We're glad to bring these ladies here today. The two ladies, women, if y'all stand up. This is Shanice Cunningham and Molly Speck, and they're doing a fine job for us, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Appreciate it. Sixteen C.
A resolution consenting to inclusion of property in the multi-county industrial business park and for the införderance of project volume and mixed use commercial enterprise affordable housing units in the vicinity of Unity Park.
So moved.
Second.
There was aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. This manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
A workshop. Came up tonight. Possibly be covered.
Well, just a couple of updates.
He's allowing you to speak now.
First, I wanted to say that I had the pleasure of riding on the city's inaugural Black History Bus Tour on Saturday. Thank you to Councilwoman Fleming and Ms. Sylvia Palmer for serving as guides and sharing their lived history. The tours were the idea of Greenlink dispatcher Fran Pardon and were planned in collaboration with the city's communications department. In addition to Fran, I'd like to recognize Nicole McGadden and John Wright with Greenlink for their work on the logistics and transportation, and from the city's communications team led by Brett Brotherton. I'd like to thank Lauren Thomas, Byron Melvin, M.J. Simpson, and Lauren Tadeshi for their work on the webpage, interactive and printed map, historical research, graphic design, and the organization of presenters and guests. It was a wonderful tour on Saturday, and I was just really thrilled to be part of it, and thank you very much, Councilmember Fleming and to Ms. Sylvia Palmer for just sharing with us just so much about our history that I hope everybody will take the opportunity to learn. And for those who didn't get to go on the tour and would still like to, we have another one available on the twenty-fourth, and all of the information about the tour is available on our website.
We had eight visitors from North Carolina who found out about the tour and came to Greenville and wrote on it. And one of them from Raleigh, North Carolina, and wanted us to give them information. They talked to the staff about it. I said, Lord have mercy, North Carolina? It's exciting, but it was very exciting. I'm saying that it's sold out and, et cetera. So if it's sold out.
We, we'll have a waitlist.
Yeah, we'll just have a waiting list.
Very good. It didn't rain that day, right?
Oh, it was so beautiful.
Sky. You got some?
Yes, sir. One more thing. Also, on Friday, we launched a new initiative called Don GVL. It's a video series featuring new restaurants and honored chefs debuted on city's social media channels. Don GVL is a spinoff of Shop GVL, a seasonal promotion that spotlight, or spotlights our retailers. Don GVL videos will post twice a month. The first featured Carmella's Dessert Bar and Cafe. Next up is Kurian, a charcuterie experience in the West End. Don GVL is hosted by our very own Joe Gagnon with videography by Mateo Rodriguez and social media productions from Herlindo Zavallis, Herlinda Zavallis. Lauren Tadeshi designed the logo, the advertisements, and the swag items that you will see at your council retreat. Greenville has two hundred restaurants, eighty percent of which are locally owned and not part of a chain. We are, we are very excited to showcase our food scene as it gains national recognition. And I know this is an item of particular importance to Councilmember DeWorke, and so very excited about this new initiative from our team. I think it's going to be really great to highlight some of our locally owned businesses right here in Greenville.
Eighty percent. Wonderful.
Very good. Okay.
And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
That's it. Okay. Thank y'all very much. Meeting enjoy.